It is going.
Hell yeah, guys.
Let's sink in. One, two, three.
Uh, yes.
I don't know about you, Wes, but uh, you know, you've been talking about the daily naps. I'm starting, starting to get a little bit worried about diabetes creeping in with all the, with all the midday naps.
You're lethargic?
Yeah.
Yep.
Gotta make a move here.
Well, fatathon starts soon.
It's time to either make a, make a life changer, just accept diabetes.
What's happening? You're getting tired?
About diabetes scare going around the media these days.
Yeah, Wes, I know. It's true. Wes and I are taking a lot of unintentional midday naps or like lethargic in the middle of the day. Yeah.
Guys are taking naps?
Too many naps.
I took like a twenty minute or today.
Yeah, twenty minutes not bad. When it gets up to like an hour, they say that's when diabetes is creeping in.
Yeah, before I was on like a two hour, yeah.
Yeah.
Fighting it.
Instead of that nap, we gotta do some cardio or something.
Oh, man.
Stay away from the sugars.
Yeah.
Huh. Yeah, we gotta start the, I mean, the fatathon begins soon, so.
Yeah.
Be a real shame if we just, just got diabetes.
Wouldn't suck. I don't think I want to know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not pricking your finger every day? That doesn't sound that fun.
No.
I think they're working on a workaround there.
Yeah.
There's supposed to be like a breath one, I think.
Yeah, it's pretty much, it's pretty much worth getting it nowadays.
It's an asshole. They get so easy.
So easy. Eat away.
So easy to have diabetes. Fucking sweet, man. They made that shit easy. Good morning and welcome to episode seven sixty-two of Hard Factor. It is Wednesday, September first, twenty twenty-one. Thank you for cheating on the news with us. I'm Will. We got Mark, Pat, Wes. All the fellas in the house today for this Wednesday episode. Talking some pranks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for joining. Uh, we're talking some pranks, uh, a little surprise looming in the cup of coffee. What else, what else, guys?
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
You.
Thank you. Story Mark's gonna hate later, I can tell you that.
Yeah, I kinda know a little bit about it. I might look away. Uh, Virginia School Board has seen better days. Got a story about them.
Yeah, and we're talking about the most, well, the dick pic congressman. You know what I'm talking about.
Anthony Weiner?
Mm-mm. You'll have to stay tuned to find out.
Insert any congressman?
Yeah, but this one does it a lot.
Right.
Big fan. Nice. Uh, okay, uh, real quick, somebody in the hard Ohio family, Connor Snoga, um, is, uh, from San Antonio and he's, uh, loading up supplies and taking them into southeast Louisiana right now, uh, to help with Hurricane Ida relief. Um, he's, uh, he also runs a, a community pantry set up at St. Anthony's of Padua Church in Luling, Louisiana. Um, if you want to help out, uh, he's a guy, he's, his, his Venmo is at Connor, two N's, C-O-N-N-O-R dash Snoga, S-N-O-G-A. Um, and he's taking like gasoline, uh, water, anything else that people need over, um, who have been affected by Hurricane Ida, Ida from Texas to Louisiana. He's doing that this weekend. He's holding a big fish.
We're positive, we're positive Connors on the up and up.
Right, Mark. So I was just trying to get ahead of that. Uh, he's holding a giant fish in every profile pic I could find of him, which lets you know it's legit Cajun or a really good catfisher. So.
Sure.
Yeah.
Wait, catfish or like fisher of catfish or?
Exactly. But, but I, I think, I, like this guy, he runs a community pantry set up at, 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 uh, St. Anthony's of Padua's Church in Luling, Louisiana. Again, if you want to help out, you can hit him with a Venmo.
I believe he's on the up and up and he's doing a great noble thing. So what's, I mean, if you got ten extra dollars, who cares if it's, you know, whatever.
If he takes five of them.
If he takes it.
It's helping out Louisianans.
Water and gas. They need it.
It's better than whatever you were gonna do, which is nothing.
Exactly. Which is like eat, eat something crappy or buy cigarettes or some bullshit. Yeah, yeah.
So, and, uh, I remember, uh, the listener that sent that tip in, so if it is a scam, I will find you.
That's right.
So. There you have it.
Say his Venmo one more time.
Uh, at Connor Snoga, two N's and Connor dash S-N-O-G-A is, uh, how, how you, uh, how you can contribute to the cause. Uh, also, housekeeping item, Green Room. It is What the Fuck Wednesday, live at five PM Eastern today. We're gonna talk craziest poop stories on the Green Room app by Spotify. Download it, follow all the hosts. Get in there. Craziest poop stories.
I was, I was riding home after dropping the kiddo off at school and Stern was, uh, sharing poop stories this morning. It was a sign.
That is a sign.
Artie was telling just an all-timer. I don't know if anyone's gonna beat Artie's, but we're gonna try.
Can you tell Artie's on today's show?
Yeah, on, yeah, absolutely. I remember.
Pretend like it's yours.
If it gets stale, just recount Artie Lang's poop story. Pat, are you excited for the poop stories?
Nope.
Okay.
Pat gets real squeamish around poop.
Yeah, but you've got the, you've got some, you have, you have, uh, a formidable scent.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
What? Move on, move on.
You've got a robust.
The most formidable, I'd say.
A robust odor.
It's, if you were like a superhero, it'd be one of your weapons.
Right. It would be powerful.
Yeah.
Against roommates.
Yeah. Roommates hate him.
Don't show your roommate to this roommate.
Okay, well, do you have a good shit story though?
No, I don't want.
It's all right. You don't have to tell one. You just have to, you just have to make those noises.
Just listen and, uh, we'll judge.
Just one time I was taking a dump.
It's, they all started out that way.
Right, yeah. Yeah. And then something didn't work out the way I thought it was gonna.
Yeah.
And hilarity ensued.
Oh, yeah. Always.
That's it.
Everybody poops.
How'd you know my story?
Yeah, and there was a member of the opposite sex involved. You know where you get a lot of, uh, I walked into a, I was at a party and I wanted to go take a dump and then I opened the door and there was a hot chick there.
We're at bar, no door.
I've done that one.
A lot of those.
You, I know you've told that story on a green room before.
I know.
Really?
I knew that's what you were referencing.
Well, it also happened to me. But it wasn't me, it was someone else.
See, more evidence that everybody has a good bathroom story. So join the Green Room What the Fuck Wednesday today, live at five PM Eastern.
My wife, my wife caught me walking around the house like recently in the past couple of months and I was walking around naked and all of a sudden she starts laughing and it's because I had like a little piece of toilet paper sticking out the top of my cheeks.
Come on. Oh, yeah, it's stuck to your body. Oh, no.
So she had a good laugh because she was like, you're, you're, you have some toilet paper in your butt.
We're supposed to start the diet competition again soon, Mark. Don't worry. That stuff like that'll stop happening if we just take a couple of steps in the right direction.
Sure. Sure, Will. That butt's gonna go right away.
Yep, I'm pretty sure. You'll be pooping less.
Can't even wipe it'll be so, no, no butt. See, we'll be pooping less, you know? Less poop, I see.
All right, let's do the news. Cup of coffee and the big time is up first.
Yeah, cup of coffee in the big time.
Holidays, history, trending news. And it is September first, the start of a new month. Uh, I didn't look up anything about September. You guys know anything about like September, anything?
It's a good month.
You gotta remember one of the days in there, just Labor Day.
Yeah, the twenty, was it, is the twenty-first of September? What's the name of the song?
No.
Do you remember?
Oh.
Something of September.
Twenty-first, right. Four, fourteenth? I don't, I don't recall. Earth, Wind and Fire? Is that what it is?
Fire.
Okay, uh, September first.
It's my birthday month too, Virgos. Go Virgos.
Really? Oh, yeah. Happy early birthday, Mark.
A lot of, a lot of our friends are born. So you know why Pat and me and a lot of people were born around this time of, of the year? Cause our parents like to fuck in the winter.
Hell, yeah, they do. Cozy up.
New Year's babies, basically.
Best cure for cold balls, right? Warm pussy.
What?
You ever heard that?
No.
Nope.
Best, best cure, best cure for cold balls.
Somebody said that.
Who said that to you?
Warm pussy, some guy in Kentucky.
Some guy in Kentucky?
He's doing it wrong. How's it, what?
He just nests, he just nests them on up in there. Like a hand warmer.
Slap it against it.
That's MGD.
Told that to a girl one time. She didn't like it.
I know, shit. I would've thought that would've gone over.
It's like trying to stick a piece of spaghetti up a pipe, what he's doing.
Yeah, I don't think he goes all the way in. I think he just wants to be near it. Like a bum, like a bum by a fire.
Yeah, it's like putting your hands on a heat.
He wants to get real close to it.
Yeah.
Feel the heat coming off that.
That's right.
What'd you say?
Yeah, what, when he said that to you? I said, you're absolutely right.
And I know from experience.
Totally, man.
Yeah. You know what? You're absolutely right, sir.
How much older was Ethan you?
I don't know. I think he was like a senior and I was a freshman.
In part of a wisdom.
Yep.
That's amazing. Uh, holidays for September first are, uh, Building and Code Staff Appreciation Day. Um, congrats to everybody who's in building and code. Um, uh, Chicken Boy Day, Emma M. Nut Day, Ginger Cat Appreciation Day, Global Talent Acquisition Day, National Cherry Popover Day, National No Rhyme Nor Reason Day, National Tofu Day in, only in the UK. Uh, Pink Cadillac Day, Save Japan's Dolphins Day, Toy Tips Executive Toy Test Day, and World Letter Writing Day. Just a.
You notice it wasn't Save Japan's Whales because that's a lost cause.
Well, they don't need saving. They don't need saving, Mark. They can look after themselves.
They slaughter the shit out of those dolphins over there.
I can't wait till the whales start messing with the Japanese whaling ships and start just, just capsizing them. They're gonna figure it out soon. I'm rooting for it.
You guys ever watch that show Whale Wars?
Oh, yeah.
Everyone's seen it, right? Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a, the entire show is, is a clickbait.
Right, because you never see anything.
There's no war.
Right, yep.
No, it's a bunch of like nerds out on a ship trying to prevent whaling and like, they never, there's no action.
They shoot like confetti at the, the equivalent of confetti at the.
Yeah, they're like, we fired a flare.
It like, it like, it's supposed to like spoil the meat or something.
Whale hunters wouldn't go, it wouldn't go well.
Watch this. These Japanese, uh, whalers hate confetti.
Yeah.
No, it like, it like spoils the meat. They, they shoot stuff over that spoils the whale, whale meat. So it renders it useless.
It also kills the whale, yeah. Gets the blowhole.
The whales are dead when they, when the, when the whale, when the whale people that are, that are trying to save the whales, that makes it, their, their efforts futile.
Oh, that's stupid. But like, it's like, you know, like if you ever heard of a freegan, like a vegan that if, if it's there and it's dead or they delete it because it's, it would go to waste otherwise.
Right, yeah. I mean, that whale's life is then, he's not imparting any of that blubber.
I agree with you.
Fucking wasteful, man.
Yeah, that is incredibly wasteful.
Yeah. Why do the Japanese love eating whales so much?
Uh, have you tried whale? Have you?
West, yeah, that's the place.
A lot of it is just this, just.
You hate whales so much, you could just feast on whales.
No, he's saying penis is like this.
Well, you'd have erection. Yeah, but you'd get erection.
Everything gives you an erection over there.
It's like this.
It's the second best thing for a cold pair of balls.
Yeah, his whale blubber.
Nice plate of whale meat.
Yeah.
What's the best cure? Whale blubber, warm pussy.
I don't know why they eat it. I know it's, it's got to do something with penises.
Oh, for sure. But also blubber is probably delicious because fat on a steak. I mean, come on.
I mean, frying something in whale blubber, that's gotta be awesome.
Yeah, come on.
Yeah.
Sure, human's great too, you know?
Probably.
Younger humans, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know. Not interested in that one. Uh, today in history, September first, uh, not a bad one. Starts out real bad. Nineteen thirty-nine, it was the German invasion of Poland.
That was, that ended half the day later.
The old blitzkrieg tactics, yeah. Um, and, uh, swift action. Uh, made it a, made it a walk in the park for the Nazis there, unfortunately. Uh, but it gets better. Uh, nineteen fifty-one, uh, Australia, New Zealand and the United States signed the Anzus Pact. Anzus. Anzus Pact. Um, it's like basically like, you know, mutual protection pact between those oceanic countries.
We're Australia and we're New Zealand and you're the US. Let's be Anzus.
Yes. Anzus, mate. Anzus. What does that mean?
Just the first letter of our countries.
Sounds like a combination of the words, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, nineteen eighty-five, September first, uh, in a search led by American oceanographer Robert Ballard, the wreck of the Titanic was found on the ocean floor at a depth of about thirteen thousand feet or four thousand meters.
What a discoveries. Now that's a treasure hunter.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Speaking of any, uh, you guys getting back on the trail, I hear that we're releasing that video, right?
Glad you asked. Yeah, I'd say, um, this week, look for it. If not today, by Friday, we're gonna release Wes and I, Hard Factor Treasure Hunters on YouTube for the public, for the general public to watch and see what we've done.
You basically almost found the Titanic in that.
Very close. The last find is it shocked a combined hundred and fifty years of treasure hunters. It blew their minds.
Yeah. It was mind blowing stuff. Really, 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 uh, revolutionary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
YouTube. Hard Factor YouTube.
Enjoyed the hell out of it. Okay, uh, top three trending news stories. Number three, Mike Richards. Uh, he was fired all the way from Jeopardy for being a total clown, uh, that tried to hire himself as the host when he was already the executive producer of the show. And the job was to replace the most iconic TV host of all time, Alex Trebek. Um, so he did that. There was also his controversial podcast statements that we've covered before. Um, Jeopardy released a statement on why they fired Mike Richards, but they did not have to. So long, Mike Richards. You trended three times this summer.
So what the fuck is going on? Every time I turn goddamn around, there's a new guest, they're trying, some new asshole, just pick a fucking lane, man. This isn't like the Oscars.
A lot of it's already been taped. A lot of it's already been taped. So they're, they're like, they're saying they have no, they can't go back now.
We're all gonna host it, right?
Pat, the thing is they're realizing it's just an impossible task to replace.
Well, you can't expect someone to just get in there and be Trebek day one. Like you gotta give them some fucking runway. You gotta just lock in with a choice and just, and make that person your quarterback and, and.
They should just cancel the show. They should just stop the show.
They should just do it with Bialik. I think that like, she's fine, right? Like, isn't everybody, like she's the host that's left now.
She's not.
No?
No.
No?
Okay.
Pass.
She's, she's obnoxious. That's what she is.
All right then, you fucked it up real bad, Jeopardy. Uh, moving it on. Number two, the dog crates, uh, left at the Kabul airport, a stack of dog crates with live dogs in them. Uh, were left at the, uh, Kabul airport after the USA left and now the, uh, blame game is in full effect. Here is a picture of the dogs in the crates that set social media and the internet just ablaze with, with very angry people who are, you know, rightfully upset that the dogs got abandoned there at the Kabul airport.
Cuomo situation.
It's not good. It's not good. Uh, but here's the response.
Maybe the Taliban will take care of them.
Right. Well, funny you say that, Mark. Here's the response from, uh, Pentagon Press Secretary John Kirby. He tweeted, he said, "To correct erroneous reports, the US military did not leave any dogs in cages at Hamid Karzai International Airport, including the reported military working dogs. Photos circulating online were animals under the care of the Kabul Small Animal Rescue, not dogs under our care. So those were just dogs people were hoping that we would take with us instead of leaving on the boiling hot tarmac garage in Kabul." That's the good note from the, uh, from the Pentagon Press Secretary.
You gotta let the dogs go. Yeah, at least open the fucking cages.
Nah, yeah. Something other than.
Like a baby goat in college.
Yeah. Um, Kirby, he actually added more about the actual American human beings that got left, uh, in Afghanistan who still want to come home after the full troop withdrawal. President Joe Biden estimated the amount of Americans left in Afghanistan to be about one to two hundred or maybe ten percent of the total Americans at the start of, uh, the withdrawal in his weird angry speech on Tuesday afternoon. Uh, and then Kirby, uh, the, the press secretary for the Pentagon, said this of those Americans, uh, still stuck in Afghanistan who want to get out.
Like, how does diplomacy get those people out of the Taliban-controlled Afghanistan?
It's not completely unlike the way we do it elsewhere around the world. I mean, we have, uh, Americans that get stranded in, in, uh, in countries all the time.
So, just another day, day at the office.
So fuck them, right?
Just, just another day at the office, bro, curbs.
Yeah.
You know? Also, was that like code for pay a ransom? Was that like, what is he saying there?
No, they're saying leverage. They're saying, uh, just like we do it always, we build leverage, we find a leverage point and then we leverage them out of there.
We got some of theirs, they got some ours. You know, it's politics.
Well, there was, there was a deal.
Showbiz, baby!
There was some sort of secret deal done between the Taliban and the US government to escort people out. I mean, the Taliban really wanted all of our people out so they could not be on their best behavior or whatever the fuck that is, like.
Well, there's reports, I don't know how accurate of like them just like going door to door and just executing the Afghanistan people that helped us now.
Well, yeah, we played the video yesterday of the fucking public, the Kandahar thing set the tone. I mean, you know what's happening now.
Also, if what Joe Biden said.
It's what, hot boy summer for them, right?
Right, yeah.
If what Joe Biden said in his speech, like that they had been warning them since March to get the fuck out. I mean, sorry, but like if you've been getting warned for that long to get the fuck out of Afghanistan and you didn't at this point.
Yeah, but at the same time, Wes, uh, but Wes, at the same time, he gave a speech like twenty days ago saying that the, the new Afghan government would not fall. And like, there was like basically no chance of it happening.
If, if, if I'm in Afghanistan, they're like, listen, get out of Afghanistan. You might, you might be fucked in a couple of months. I'm getting out of Afghanistan.
Yeah, but if you're with your family and the president's saying, if you're with your family and the president's saying that there's no, there's no danger.
That, that goes both ways, Wes. Yeah, yes, it is foolhardy to, to not get out as early as you can, but the US was still granting visas like to the six families in California that went, this summer, way after March, they got granted to go from California to Afghanistan. Why, why were they still allowing that? Look, the whole thing, the whole thing, there's definitely mistakes made by the people that stayed and stuff like that, but also mistakes made by.
There's mistakes made all around.
All around and, and the bottom line is there's still people over there that are US citizens that are stuck.
I agree. I, it sucks, but I'm just saying.
But he get, but Biden did give a, give a mission accomplished victory speech on Tuesday, though, already, even though he was still stuck over there. So, yes.
Called it an extraordinary success.
Could not have gone better in his estimation. It was basically the gist of the speech. So, um, uh.
Besides the, what, hundred people that died, including thirteen US.
Yeah, but that's the world that he's living in, is that it couldn't have possibly gone better. Um, number one, the cream of the crop today, sadly, keeping it kind of sad, unfortunately, due to the heavy, yeah, sorry, guys, due to the heavy flooding last week and continued rains this week from Hurricane Ida. Uh, Bonnaroo, the music festival in Manchester, Tennessee, scheduled, it had been delayed, uh, for this upcoming weekend, had to be canceled altogether. Pat, Hard Factor Pat is a Bonnaroo veteran. Uh, can you please explain to the listeners, Pat, what people are missing out on this year due to the rain, last year due to COVID, two years in a row?
Oh, let's talk about the room, man. You wanna go down to the farm? Meet me at the farm. Which stage? What stage? I don't know. You know what I mean? Talk about Bonnaroo, Manchester, Tennessee, bro. It's the, uh, the, 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 the mother of all music festivals, right? It was the first one. It was the pioneer of the new music festival era, uh, started twenty years ago, right outside of Nashville, Tennessee. Perfect music festival really because of its proximity to Nashville. So, uh, Bonnaroo is really fucking hot. Uh, there's rumors that it's built on a, uh, on a, like a, like a dump, right? Built over a dump kind of situation.
Mount Trash Bowl.
It's just a hot fucking open field, uh, where there's lots of molly and camping. It's one of those camping festivals where like you wake up in your tent at, uh, six AM or seven AM. As soon as the sun gets up and your tent gets to be a hundred and nine degrees and there's no water anywhere and your mouth tastes like a little person's shat in it.
Don't you wake up to the scent of.
That sounds like a good party, though.
Don't you wake up to the scent of yourself and all the others that smell just terrible because no one's clean there?
I wouldn't know. I, I only go VIP, so.
Oh, yeah, but still, even VIP, even VIP, if you're glamping at one of these things, you're gonna get pretty fucked.
No, I, uh.
You're gonna, you're gonna get pretty stinky.
The first time I went, I was, I was working and, um, had to camp, had to slum it. The time that I got to go back where I, first time I went, I was an intern. Second time I got to go back with a band where like normally it's the sweetest way to experience a festival.
Big swinging dick there.
Still the worst festival experience I've ever had in my life. Even with all access passes, it was still hot and nasty and there was nowhere to sit.
Okay.
Uh, but Ed Helms, right? He, he, uh, he does a bluegrass jam there for the bluegrass situation, which is pretty cool. And, um, you know, uh, Robert Randolph one time, um, stole my girlfriend there.
Okay, uh, you know, uh, I thought you were gonna have some nice things to say, but let's move it on and surprise, surprise, mates, because those top three, they were shit, eh? Uh, we're taking a real quick international trip down under to Australia. It's magpie swooping season again, fellas. Look at this horrifying, uh, video posted to Instagram from the Brown Cardigan account in Australia. Here it is.
Oh, shit!
You see the magpie? That's just a full grown man, eh? Crying like a little bitch because the magpie is chasing him and swooping down for his head. Uh, unbelievable. Keep your head on a swivel down under during swooping season, July through November, every year. And that is today's cup of coffee in the big time.
Those are fun. Rick Holt sends us a bunch of those and they're just, every one of them is funny.
Magpie videos are great.
Yeah, they are the best. Uh, if you haven't watched a magpie swooping video, you should, uh, because that was a more fun story than any of the trends today. And that was today's cup of coffee in the big time, brought to you by Gabi. Inflation is out of control. It's crazy how fast these prices, uh, of just about everything are rising. Gas, groceries, clothes, you name it. And all of the experts are saying it's going to get worse before it gets better. I've been looking at all the ways I can personally cut costs, uh, ways, uh, ways to save where I can. I started with my auto insurance and I started with Gabi. That's the way to do it. G-A-B-I. Shopping for auto insurance sucks. I get it. And so does Gabi. That's why they do all the work for you. Things that would take, uh, days or weeks, Gabi does in minutes. Gabi uses, uh, your current policy to compare your, uh, current coverage with forty of the top insurance providers like Progressive, Nationwide and Travelers. Uh, they're one of the true comparison platforms with fast verifiable quotes, not ballpark guesses. And because Gabi uses your current coverage, uh, they only showcase policies that are the same or better than your current coverage, many of them at a lower price. And Gabi is free to use and they never sell your information. So no annoying spam or robocalls. Gabi helped, uh, me find the right policy that was fifty dollars cheaper a month than my current policy. Uh, that's six hundred dollars a year when you add it all up. People who switch, yeah, that's a big savings. People who switch with Gabi on average save eighty bucks a month versus their current policy. That's eighty bucks a month. That's even more than I saved. Uh, so right now, it's not just me who loves Gabi. Gabi has been featured in TechCrunch, Forbes and USA Today. Uh, start saving on your auto insurance today. Go to Gabi, G-A-B-I dot com slash Hard Factor to start saving today. It's totally free. That's G-A-B-I dot com slash Hard Factor. Gabi dot com slash Hard Factor.
Well, there you have it. So gentlemen, let's talk about the law real quick or a legal story. So seventeen defendants in cases related to, uh, the January sixth riot at the Capitol are just dumbfounded because their attorney, John Pierce, who, uh, by the way, is representing by far the most defendants involved in the January sixth proceedings.
It's his show.
Yeah, it's his show, bro. He's making a real career out of it.
That's gotta be pro bono, right?
No, not at all, dude. Not at all.
They have money? Okay.
And we're gonna get to that. It might be pro bono. The defendants might not be paying for it, but that's not stopping John.
There's a super PAC somewhere.
For making a little money.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, John's gone missing, guys. John Pierce. Um, he has not shown up at any scheduled court.
Sorry to interrupt you, but was he, is he buried under a pile of cash? Did they look, did they look under the pile of cash? Hey.
Heyo, lawyers, right? So, yeah, no, John's gone missing. He has not, uh, made it to any scheduled court appearance for the last week, uh, citing that he's potentially in the hospital fighting COVID nineteen. Um, and guys, amongst his clients are, uh, his seventeen of them are both members of the Proud Boys and the Oath Keepers, um, the latter of which is perhaps the more upset because if they say they're gonna be somewhere at a time, they keep their word, uh, as is evidenced by their name. Um, but John is nowhere to be found. In his place, Pierce has been sending associate Ryan Marshall, who although doing his best, prosecutors have warned a judge that he is, uh, Marshall is quote, "Not a licensed attorney." Yeah.
Wait, what? He's, so he's representing seventeen people in a very high profile case and he is not an attorney?
Not a licensed attorney. On top of that, Willie, he is, uh, personally facing two pending felony criminal cases against him in Pennsylvania, including defrauding a widow and her late husband in an I care a lot like situation.
This guy's like Roy Johnson, the coach from, uh, from, uh, Bishop Sycamore.
Yeah, who's got a warrant out for his arrest.
Yeah, both of them.
Right.
Brothers in arms.
Yeah, yeah, the writer's like, man, this has just gone from bad to worse. Am I right? He's not even an attorney. Uh, guys, according to, uh, according to, uh, Lockler, that's what he is, Ryan Marshall, um, Pierce is quote, "Sadly ill with COVID nineteen on a ventilator and unresponsive."
Damn.
Yeah, which probably.
Yeah.
Well, no, please.
I mean, if I, if I had a lot of people who were after me for finding out I was a fake lawyer, I would definitely fake my death. Hundred percent.
Yeah, and that ventilator's on a yacht.
Somewhere. Yeah, Pierce probably, uh, maybe he regrets, um, this tweet from the seventeenth of August. Uh, "All I know is the entire eighty-second airborne couldn't make me get an experimental government vaccine stuck in my arm. Hashtag first cabbary." Um, so yeah, maybe he regrets it, maybe not at all because maybe he's on a yacht. As Mark said, uh, guys, prosecutor. So, yeah, maybe he regrets it, maybe not at all, because maybe he's on a yacht. As Mark said, uh, guys, prosecutors smell something fishy and they think that, uh, putting forth an unlicensed attorney might just be a stall tactic that, uh, Pierce is conning them, which they have good reason to believe, guys, because Pierce, he's a con man, uh, straight up a con man. Uh, in August 2020, Pierce, who was a civil attorney, not a criminal attorney, uh, he launched a charitable nonprofit, um, called hashtag Fight Back Foundation, whose mission, um, involved raising money to fund lawsuits that would quote, "take our country back." Um, he then went to the Rittenhouse family, Kyle Rittenhouse, and, uh, had them sign a retainer agreement to retain him for a hundred thousand dollars and an hourly billing rate of $1,275, which is like two and a half times the normal rate. And that amount, of course, would be paid to him by the, you guessed it, hashtag Fight Back organization. Then he went on a media blitz on the Newsmaxes and the Fox Newses of the world, soliciting donations to help, uh, Kyle, uh, but really, um, stacking up the cash that he was gonna be billing the Rittenhouses.
This is why we needed to make the super PAC. Like this, this guy is living the dream that we wanted to live, which was defrauding everybody with a fake cause and then paying ourselves for, from it.
He billed the Rittenhouse family, uh, full rate, $1,275, uh, for going shopping for a shirt that he was gonna wear on his Tucker Carlson appearance. That's a tough bill to get. That's a tough bill. Um, yeah, guys, uh, Fight Back eventually shifted its purpose from Rittenhouse to stopping election fraud after the Rittenhouses started saying, hey, what, where's the money? Uh, and then also there was lots of questions raised about whether or not they were leaving Rittenhouse in jail, uh, so they could raise more money, saying, man, that bail's 2 million. That's a lot of money, uh, after they'd raised 5 million, but I don't know, billable hours, you know?
2 million more.
Yeah. So, um, anyway, then he pretty much quit or got himself fired.
And now he's faking, faking his death with COVID.
Yeah. Either way, pretty tricky, pretty tricky. Uh, sending the, the fake attorney, uh, is, is essentially stopping the proceeding. So it might be the smartest fucking thing he's ever done.
There's 100% chance Pierce knows how to play, how to rig three card Monte.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Where's the queen?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Follow my, follow my hands.
Yeah. Uh, we'll see where he, he, he comes from. A bunch of sources-
Gonna go fast, gonna go fast.
Gotta go fast now.
A bunch of sources- Come forward and said he doesn't have COVID?
Uh, they, oh, wait, who said he doesn't have?
People have come forth, uh, anonymous sources.
And now they're claiming that he's just high.
Oh, he's healthy as Knox.
Oh, for sure. But we, but th- this has been amazing to watch, like, because there have been some epic fraudsters that have just blossomed during the COVID era. Like COVID era has been the best time ever to defraud people. And like guys are getting on ESPN, they're getting on high profile law cases. Like it's incredible. It's just incredible. People, people paid like hundreds of thousands of dollars just collecting it from the government and they didn't even fuck it. The government did check. Like it's, it's, it's been an incredible couple of years.
Fraudsters could not believe their luck when COVID hit.
Oh, and when, when America got super divided too, that was huge. Fraudsters were like, I'm gonna use this.
Oh, yeah, for sure. That's, that's leverage. They're like, they got an angle for everything. Now this guy's like starting to squeal, you know?
He's starting to squeal.
On his yacht.
Guys, speaking of, speaking of violence around stolen elections, Capitol Hill's youngest congressman and most prolific sender of unsolicited dick pics, allegedly, Madison Cawthorn of North Carolina, was speaking to the Macon County Republican Party, um, at their headquarters in Franklin, North Carolina, um, who, by the way, guys, is running a fundraiser raffle of a Mossberg Model 512 gauge tactical stock shotgun, Mossy Oak, 20 inch barrel, with a shell holder. And that is signed by Mr. Madison Cawthorn himself. Tickets are just $10 and the drawing will be held on October 28th. Uh, anyway, Madison-
Every single event that's a Republican event has a gun drawing.
Exactly.
Like almost, almost every single one. And it's either that or like ultra expensive whiskey.
That's on the front page of their, of their, um, website. Uh-
Or an electric guitar, maybe. Like it's always something hilarious like that.
I mean, there's worse things to give away to get, I mean, guns, guns, whiskey and electric guitars. I mean, it's not like you're gonna be upset.
Anyway, Madison was speaking on Sunday where he made some comments that, uh, some on the left are saying was a call for violence. Uh, I'm gonna play the clip, guys, and I'll let you be the judge. So here's Madison, um, speaking to the Franklin County, uh, Republicans.
Everything that we're sitting here talking about, we're all so passionate right now. The things that we are wanting to fight for, it doesn't matter if our votes don't count. Because you know, if our election systems continue to be rigged and continue to be stolen, then it's, it's gonna lead to one place and it's bloodshed. And I will tell you, as much as I'm willing to defend our liberty at all costs, there's nothing that I would dread doing more than having to pick up arms against a fellow American. And the way that we even have recourse against that is if we all passionately demand that we have election security in all 50 states.
And A34 wins the gun.
Right. As I said, I would dread having to pick up arms against a fellow American, but if I absolutely had to, it would be with a Mossberg Model 512 gauge tactical stock shotgun. Prior to the drawing, the shotgun will be on display at Jeff's Ammo and Arms in Franklin.
You know, this is, this, you know, people, people who like, uh, basically threaten civil, civil war all the time, they just suck. Like it, like there's all, there's all these people and it's like the same, people do it on both sides. It's all like the secession people. It's like the, like, oh, I would hate to have to turn against you.
Yeah, it's, like, it's, like, it's a foregone conclusion. There's currently not bloodshed, but there has to be in the future.
But make me use that Mossberg that I plan on winning on October 28th when they do the drawing.
Yeah.
Um, how many-
I mean, civil war, civil war is insane. We just talked about yesterday, General Sherman, who literally like burned the South to the ground. Like nobody wants that again. Like stop, stop.
If I can't have, no one can.
If you invoke like civil wars over like, over, over little shit, like, I mean, I, what is he talking about there? He's talking about-
He's talking about the election was stolen.
If we don't, if we don't get these goddamn mail-in votes under control, I'm gonna have to shoot somebody is what he's saying.
He needs a lot better proof.
We don't redraw these lines.
Yeah, he needs a lot better proof of massive fraud than if he wants to threaten civil war over that.
Yeah. The people were kind of like, yeah, yeah.
No, they were like, they were like, mm-hmm.
You heard, you heard some different directions. How, how, how long do you think it takes for Cawthorn to correct someone who confuses him for a combat veteran? Because you know what happens all the time. And you know, you know, you know, the gap of time from where they confuse him into where he corrects him is a little too long, right?
Oh, for sure. Yep.
Yeah, but that's not the issue. It's gonna be when he has to answer to all the dick pics one day.
Yes. He's kind of like hi- hi- him in the wheelchair, him in the wheelchair and then like probably like wearing camo from time to time is like the equivalent of Biden constantly bringing up Bo every, every single time.
Oh, man, the gold star.
Did you see, yeah.
He's talking about Bo more than people that actually died in the war.
My son who just died.
Much more, much more.
He's talking about Bo more than my son who just died in Afghanistan. Yeah.
Uh, well, guys, Cawthorn spokesperson Luke Ball, um, addressed the criticism on Tuesday, uh, saying, and this is the actual quote, um, in his con, in his comments, Congressman Cawthorn is clearly advocating for violence not to occur over election integrity questions. This guy is a fucking comms director and that's how he worded, that's how he worded his fucking, his-
This is to prevent violence.
It's on like a separate page for violence.
He's clearly advocating for violence.
To be clear, the violence doesn't have to happen.
Right.
As long as y'all fix this.
Yeah. He's like, he's, he's like the same as like the climate people that are like, the world's gonna end 100% and less, you know, like it's the same type, same type of like dire language, you know? Yeah.
There's always a string, there's always a carrot on the string in politics.
And that segment was brought to you guys by Mossberg Firearms.
Yeah. No, it wasn't.
Nothing I like better at my raffles.
It is, it is serious. If you want to see if you're in the area, it is at Jeff's Ammo and Arms in Franklin until the 28th on display, so.
It's on display. Man, I wouldn't display Madison Cawthorn's signature.
Oh, shit. Who the fuck wants a signed? 18 or older, have to pay the taxes. $10 to entry.
You'd have to have a better signature on there than Cawthorn, right? To put something up in the shop like-
Very presumptuous by Cawthorn.
They might, they might have, like, he's publicized that it's there.
Sign it, Madison, sign it.
They may have put the gun like down. It's maybe not at the, the top of the display.
Yeah. No, bro, it literally says that it's displayed. It, it lists it where it's displayed.
Yeah, but they're gonna, they're gonna bury that one at the bottom of the rack. That's not that impressive of a signature.
No, it's not. Um, all right, guys.
It's time for the TikTok International Moment.
Boom. Today we are going to Ireland, we're gonna go to Russia, and then we're gonna go up to Vancouver for the closer. And, um, let's get to it. Uh, we're gonna go to Ireland first. And Mark, you may want to just go get a nice cold beverage and, uh, come back in about two minutes because you are not gonna like this story because it's about fist-sized, aggressive, sexually charged house spiders. Um, that's house spider, uh, because they're in your house, um, and they're running amok in Ireland. Um, so, yeah.
Cross that off the list.
Wes, I gotta make a correction. I gotta make a correction. It is from the Irish Times, but this is taking place in England.
Oh, really?
Also in the UK, though.
Okay. Well, wherever, in the UK, okay. In the UK, we're gonna go with Ireland. There it is, is the house, Ireland under attack from sex crazed spiders the size of your hand. That's the headline. So I don't know where you saw it, Pat, but anyway. Um, so apparently this species of spider, the giant house spider, which can get to about 10 centimeters in diameter and can scurry up your leg at the equivalent of 0 to 60 miles an hour in one second. So that's a fast spider. Are once again-
It's like a fucking roller coaster.
Yeah, it's very, very fast. It'll break your, break your bones. Um, are once again plaguing the UK and Ireland, um, as they do every August through September because they are very horny, horny and aren't, uh, letting humans stand in their way of finding that special female spider to impregnate. So she can lay hundreds of eggs and continue the cycle of life and the cycle of Mark's nightmares. Wow.
Yeah.
That's one of the scary things about spiders too, is like, if they lay eggs, it's game over. There's just so many spiders.
Have you ever stepped on a pregnant spider's back mark and the egg and the, and the little babies fly, go everywhere?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, man, that's so terrifying.
My wife found a black widow in the back, we had a tree removed a couple of years ago because it was about to fall on the house. A professional tree remover came out, but there's still a stump. And like we were out of the baby pool two weeks ago and my wife found a black widow in the tree stump.
Oof, gross. Yeah, wolf, wolf spiders carry them around.
She sprayed it with a hose and I just wanted to move immediately. I wanted to-
You need to get some spider spray. I mean, it's very toxic, but it works.
Mark goes to the shed and gets a, gets a can of gasoline. She's like, what are you doing?
Yeah, they will infest the shed. Um, Dr. Chris Terrell, uh, Neil of Nottingham Trent University said, quote, "The spider that is coming into houses at the moment is the house spider and it is one of the world's biggest spiders." Um, and is urging everyone to look under all your pillows, in your shoes, the back of your neck, uh, because there could be a very large and horny, uh, spider hiding in those places. And, um, while the things are, yeah. Totally terrifying. Yeah, just back of your neck. Just totally terrifying.
Mark, you wanna check the back of your neck? Um, and they can, uh, they're not venomous, but they can deliver quite a painful bite if provoked or stepped on or rolled over on while you're sleeping in bed.
Oh, you're saying the fist-sized spider can actually bite you and hurt you? Yeah, I'd, I'd believe it. I'd buy it.
Yeah, especially at night when you're rolling around in bed, you let, you just roll over on one of those things, Mark. Um, but Mark, that doctor also-
TikTok, they're short, they're supposed to be short, Wes.
Yeah, I know. But that doctor also wants you to remember the vital role these spiders play in the ecosystem as far as pest control. And said, the silver lining for people like you, Mark, is that once these large males mate and create thousands of other spiders, they themselves will die. So one less large spider, but thousands of more baby spiders to grow up to be large spiders. So-
That's great news.
Sleep tight, Mark. Um, now moving to Russia, and before I begin the story, I want everyone to know that this little girl is fine in this story, but my God, is this hilarious? So we've all been to petting zoos, right? Um, it's like a rite of passage as a child. You go to a petting zoo, maybe you hold a lizard or a bird, um, or you are brave enough to even hold a snake, like, um, one little girl named Victoria did while visiting Russia's Butterfly Park Petting Zoo with her parents. Uh, there she is with the, the Rufus beaked snake, which is a venomous snake, by the way. So, uh, what could go wrong, right? Well, um, this is what went wrong.
I just need you to get the food.
Here she is. Here's the snake. Oh, it bit her.
Oh, bitter, right? Right in the fat cheek. Uh, yeah.
Okay. At least she's fully grown, so, uh, the venom won't fully affect her body.
Yeah.
That's terrifying.
47 pound body.
Yeah, so that's a venomous snake. It's the zoo staff just dangled around her neck, bit her right on the fat part of her cheek and she was rushed to the hospital as a precaution because though this thing is from East Africa, it's considered mildly venomous. It still has enough venom to kill small animals at hunts. So God knows what would have happened if that little girl was allergic or something. Um, and then according to Victoria's dad Vladimir, quote, "The zoo staff said that the snake does not attack people and, but look at what it did to my Victoria. It bit her on the little cheek and I am not pleased with zoo for lie they told me about my snake." So, um, you know, Vladimir is very upset, um, obviously that they, yeah, yeah. But again, she's fine. She's fine. Um, and, uh, you know, she's not gonna be going back to that petting zoo. Um, all right, this last one, guys, is from Vancouver, uh, at a Dairy Queen in Port Alberni, uh, British Columbia, um, goes to show you that this is, it's not just Americans who are losing their minds with masks. Here's a local news clip, which pretty much explains it all.
And that you may find this next video disturbing. A man in Port Alberni has taken his frustration with BC's COVID rules to the absolute extreme and it was caught on camera.
Peeing on a counter.
That's the sound of workers at a Dairy Queen shrieking in horror as a disgruntled customer appears to urinate on the counter. In videos posted to Facebook, the man can be heard arguing with staff, refusing to wear a mask.
You don't have a brain. So I think this guy's pretty much homeless.
He's peeing on countertops.
Yeah, he hears his voice.
Yeah. He sounds like Shorzy from Letter Kenny.
I mean, we all have this card to play.
There he goes. He just whips it out.
This is the first incident of this nature, um, but I haven't, uh, heard of anything else, especially not, uh, not like this. Um, I think people should just, uh, wear their masks and be safe, be polite.
Say that cop.
Sergeant Chris. Uh, that, that guy lives like how Will wants to live if there were no rules. Remember Will's, Will's, Will's like, oh, I'd like to masturbate in public, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'd like, guys living the life. I mean, too bad he's gonna get locked up for it, but.
He is completely free.
Yeah, they haven't caught him yet. Here's a picture of that, what he actually looks like. Um- So I bet he's got low blood pressure, man.
Oh, yeah. He just does what he wants. The best part is after he left, after the people were screaming, he's doing it. And he, and he left, he yelled at them. He goes, you're fucking psychos. He told them they're fucking psychos.
Clean up my piss, psychos.
That dude is relaxed. Yeah. He's not worried about it. Give me a Blizzard.
Yeah, give him golden shower. So, um, all right, guys, uh, I'll tell you what, 40 is just around the corner for me. And with that number closing in, you can bet your ass I lose some sleep with worrying about things. Should I, should I get a colonoscopy? Do I really want to know if that doesn't go well? How much longer am I gonna have my teeth? Am I crazy or is everyone else crazy? You know, the normal stuff. Luckily though, once I fall asleep, my Helix mattress helps my troubled mind stay asleep and wake up refreshed, ready to take on the exact same worries as the day before, right? So Helix Sleep has a quiz that takes just two minutes to complete and matches your body type and sleep preference to perfect mattress for you. Uh, why would you buy a mattress that made for someone else, right? With Helix, you're getting the mattress that you know is perfect for the way you sleep. Everybody's unique, so they have several different mattresses from firm, soft, medium, uh, cooling, hot, uh, plus size sleepers like us. I took the quiz. I got the Midnight Luxe mattress because I, I, I sleep on my side. I kind of hug a pillow. Uh, it's like a safety thing on my stomach side. It's perfect for me. Amazing mattress. Um, it's like, you know, those hotel mattresses when you go to a nice hotel and you sleep on a nice mattress and you're like, God, where do they get this mattress? It feels like that every night. So if you're looking for a mattress, take the quiz and it'll show up right to your door, shipped for free. Helix was awarded number one best overall mattress picked by 2020 and by GQ and Wired Magazine. So go to helixsleep.com/hardfactor, take their two minute sleep quiz and they'll match you with a customized mattress that will give you the best sleep of your life. They have a 10-year warranty and you get to try it out for 100 nights, risk-free. They'll even pick it up for you if you don't love it, but you're gonna love it. Helix is offering up to 200 bucks off all mattresses and, and two free pillows. For Hard Factor listeners, go to helixsleep.com/hardfactor. That's helixsleep.com/hardfactor for 200 bucks off and two free pillows.
All right, we got one more story, but one more piece of business first. Uh, when you're in a low point, you, you might feel alone, but over 50% of Americans struggle with their mental health. Whenever I'm feeling down, I reach out for support and I'm glad I do because it always helps me. And asking for support when you need it is actually a sign of strength. With Talkspace, it is easy to get that support. Talkspace matches you with a licensed therapist and you schedule the live video sessions all from the comfort of your device. You can start messaging your therapist the same day you sign up. Whether you're a pa- a parent, student, millennial, or just someone having a hard day, Talkspace can provide the support to help you feel better with a single message. Um, the, the Talk, Talkspace therapists help you develop tools to cope in difficult times. They're really good. They, Talkspace works around your schedule. Like I said, it's at your convenience. You can send and receive unlimited messages with your dedicated therapist in the app. Uh, you schedule the sessions on your time with, with a licensed therapist, which is important from anywhere. Uh, and whether you, you're experiencing depression, anxiety or other problems, uh, even like relationship problems, they do relationship, uh, couples therapy. Talkspace is the number one online therapy platform to help you sort through any issue. Uh, Talkspace therapists are experts in dozens of specialties, including anxiety, depression, relationships and more, to help you start feeling better. And start feeling better with a single message. Match with a licensed therapist when you go to talkspace.com. That's talkspace.com and you can get a hundred dollars off your first month with the promo code HARDFACTOR. Hundred dollars off when you use code HARDFACTOR at talkspace.com. Okay, guys. Lots of school boards are meeting and have been meeting to make important decisions for this upcoming school year, which for a lot have already started and for some are starting in the coming weeks. Vir- Virginia, a state- Vir- Virginia, a state where all four of us went to grade school, is one of those states that starts after Labor Day, at least in, in our county where we grew up and also in Henrico County. Uh, and that's why Henrico County held their last big meeting before the school year on August 26th.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it makes sense, right? They're about to start the school year.
Gotta tidy up all the loose ends.
But you don't wanna, you don't wanna not have them tidied up before you start, right? It's a tough gig for school administrators too, the past few years, right? Like, I mean, like, you really can't win. Lots of people are gonna be mad at you, whatever you decide. And the kids forget about it, like they're screwed, right? It's terrible all around. I don't envy them. I'm glad I'm not in grade school anymore and I'm glad I don't have kids in grade school. Lucky me, huh?
Yeah, really hitting this pandemic at the right time.
Yeah.
Be minus the diabetes.
Yeah, diabetes is around the corner, but that's all, that's all I gotta worry about.
Side effect of the pandemic, but yeah. Everything else though was perfect.
My wife and I getting along great at home, but it's been a dream. So, and that's not a joke. So, yeah, the Henrico School Board, uh, was more than three hours into its agenda in this August 26th meeting that included issues like COVID-19, a return to in-school learning, transportation issues, the school resource officer program, and the adoption of pre-Labor Day start times in the future years. So there you go. Maybe Virginia will get on that August train soon. And, uh, once that ended, once they got through all those, the last item on the agenda was the public comment portion of the meeting. And now you had, you had to sign up for the public comment section of that list, uh, you know, so, and that, that list of names was tabulated by, I assume, at least one person via combing email responses or whatever method they do over there in Henrico County in the greater Richmond area. And then that list of names was put together on a sheet of paper, probably printed and retrieved from a printer. I don't know what they do over there in Henrico County, but any method they choose, right? I assume requires someone to grab the paper from the printer. And then the list once finally formed, fully formed, uh, was presented to Henrico County, uh, School Board, um, uh, Chair, uh, Roscoe Cooper, and I'm, I'm assuming someone handed to him. And I think all of the members of the school board got this piece of paper. So at this point, at least, you know, you gotta think two to, two to 10 people have seen this list, uh, and, and handled it. And look, uh, then Roscoe calls the people up one by one to give their comments. That's the kinda standard operation procedures there at Henrico, uh, at Henrico County.
Sounds like a tight ship.
Yeah, normal stuff, right? And Henrico's county is a big county, so it's probably, it's probably not a surprise to Mr. Cooper when he sees the list that there's several names on it. Uh, and you know, how is he supposed to recognize the name of every parent in the county? He's only been on the board for six to seven years. He's a busy man, along with being the chair of the school board. He's also the pastor of Rising Mount Zion Baptist Church. The guy's a busy man. Certainly too busy to comb the emails and print the list of names himself, which brings me back to my point that many people have seen the list. He's very active in his community and now he's three hours into this meeting. And, uh, in this clip I'm about to play you, he's just doing his job, calling the public members up to the microphone.
Nice.
In, in this, uh, environment, you answer to us and I'm asking that you do not pass this policy in Virginia.
Thank you so much, Ms. Thomas. We do appreciate you.
He appreciates that.
Yeah, right.
Phil McCracken.
We'd love to tell you that, that you answer to them.
Phil McCracken.
Is Phil McCracken there?
Suck, Suk, Mahidic.
So that's Suk, Suk Mahidic.
Suk Mahidic.
He said it again.
Ophelia McHawk. Ophelia McHawk.
No way.
Eileen Dover.
Oh, come on, man.
Eileen Dover.
Stop saying it.
Don Keedick.
That one took me a minute to get.
Don Keedick.
Dunky Dick.
Wayne Kerr.
Oh, shit.
Wayne Kerr.
Wanker. Dunky Dick spelled like identical. Dun- I mean, Don Keedick, Don's good, but it's spelled Dunky Dick. Um, yeah, so.
Why'd you keep reading it?
Cause they did a really, really, really good job of covering. It wasn't like the classics.
Right.
No, that, like.
It wasn't IP freely.
Eileen Over was like.
Move that from the thing. I, I think my thing froze. Can someone remove the, is it off the screen?
It's off. Yeah, it's off.
Okay, my thing. Um, so, yeah, it, I mean, they did an okay job, Pat. Like, the names, like Don Keedick is spelled pretty much.
That guy has to be able to see it on the paper and be like, come on, man.
It was D-O-N space, like he-e-d-i-c-k.
Uh, that guy gets, his awareness level, if they like rated, if they had Madden ratings for like school superintendents, his awareness is, is at a 20.
I, I don't think so. I think when you're not expecting it, these things can happen to you. Like, everyone's like, oh, I, I would have figured it out.
After Eileen Dover.
So here's, here's the deal. Like I already mentioned, he's the pastor. He's, Roscoe's also a graduate of Henrico High School. And, um, his most obvious credential is that he's the easiest person to trick in the world.
Yes.
Uh, he can be had with little to no effort. He's the first boss in the game of trickery. If you can't trick him, you can't trick anyone. Uh, you have to imagine Roscoe, the first and second, um, probably the first, Roscoe's in his middle age, probably the first has, has moved on. But if his dad's still around the second, they've gotta be, uh, pretty upset with Roscoe III here. Um, they're gonna be giving it to him as long, along with his two children that are currently in the Henrico, uh, high school system, uh, next family gathering.
That family, that family needs to live in fear that Roy Johnson or Pierce ever finds this guy. Cause if, if he gets found by, by Coach Roy Johnson or, uh, Pierce, the fraudster from today, this guy's done.
His life savings is gone.
Everything is liquidated.
College funds. Uh, yeah. Also, if you have a name, if you live in Henrico County and you have a name like Sid on it and you have something important to say, you're probably screwed because now they're gonna be really paying attention to the names. So like.
They got me once before. They got, hold on. Let's, can we review these names?
For example, Sharon Cox, not gonna be able to, uh.
Sharon Cox.
Not gonna be able to get her, get her points across. And Eric Shawn is not gonna be able to get up there. There's no way. Uh, and.
Sharon Cox.
Yeah. You can forget about it. Oliver, my face.
Best part is, the prankster waited three hours. He or she had to wait a full three.
I know. Well, they weren't there. So like, they, like, the, the funny, the best part is like, there was only, they probably could have looked out in the audience and seen there was only one person there.
Right. It was that one lady who complained and then nobody else.
And then it was a list of people and he read all of them and no one came to the podium because it was just like high school kids that were at home. They sent, they emailed these names.
He was getting trolled by his students, like by like, he like teach, if he's like a, if he's like a counselor or he's like a superintendent, he teaches like one class. And it was like his students probably that were getting him.
Don Keedick is my favorite. Where are you, Don? Uh, fuck. Well, anyways, um, oh, yeah, also I came up with Frida Titties.
Frida Titties.
Frida Titties.
Hard sell for a last name.
Yeah, but.
Not with this guy.
He went with Key Dick.
Yeah.
He was Don Key Dick. It was probably Don K-I-E.
No, I have the spelling.
You have the spelling.
K-E-D-I-C-K. It was just missing the Y. It was Don K-E-D-I-C-K.
I forget the spelling. They, they released.
They, they released them. Phil McCracken's pretty, pretty bad. Uh, Suck Mah- Suck My Dick was S-U-K and then M-A-H-D-I-K. That's hard.
When he said that one twice, I couldn't, I lo- I couldn't believe it.
Eileen Dover. It just sounds, you can hear it when you say it. Eileen Dover.
Yeah. Suk Mahidic. And he said it twice. I know. I mean, this guy is, he.
He's probably just excited that they aren't there so he can go home.
Yeah, he, but he had to read them twice. It's, it's in the rules. Gotta read them twice.
Yeah, he, no, this guy didn't realize what was going on for sure because he would have just been like, these are fake names. Yeah. He stopped reading them immediately.
He, he could have, that, on that day, he could have gotten with, been gotten with hairy vagina. Like it was, anything was going through.
Talk about COVID, COVID taking a toll. It took a toll on him. He's just like, he's, he's asleep at the wheel.
Henrico School Board, I, uh, they're probably gonna have a tough time convincing the parents that whatever decision they make was the right one after that.
He's a man of God.
Oh, come on. I mean, he's, he got duped. He got, this is, this is like, uh, this is like ESPN. I mean, he, him, ESPN.
He's certainly proved he's very mortal, Pat, if by man of God, if that's what you're talking about. He is very full of flaws.
Also, all the QAnon people, they're all getting duped. QAnon got duped, ESPN got duped, uh, this guy got duped.
Lot of duping.
Lots of duping this week.
Try to dupe us. We'll see. You got the five-star review names. You got chances, you got the voicemails. Try to, try to dupe us. Let's see if you can slip one over. We did miss that, I missed that one. It was like Mike Hawk.
Uh, Mike Hawk.
Yeah, I missed Mike Hawk. Uh, whoops.
We all missed it, to be fair, Mark. We all missed it.
Well, we were like the Henrico County School Board, uh, and that evidence is out there.
It's easy to trick us. Yes.
Yeah. All right, whatever. Fine. Fuck it. That's gonna do it for Hard Factor.
Good luck.
Yeah. If you've got a real funny name, uh, please send a picture of your license and then we'll read it on the show. Um, but yeah, we love you guys. Leave the five-star reviews, please. We're getting close to Friday. Five-star reviews, leave them on Apple. It's super important for the algorithm and we, we like reading them. It's win-win. Uh, leave the voicemails, 512-270-1480. And then what's the email where they can leave a voice memo?
HardFactorvoicemail@gmail.com.
Yeah, send a crystal clear memo there. Uh.
Wes's preferred method, just so.
It is. You're gonna have to walk me through that.
Ears preferred method, yeah.
Yeah, it's true. Um, and then 5:00 PM today, green room. A lot of poop stories. It's gonna get gross. Pat, did you have something you wanted to add? Uh, you raised your hand, but the poop story probably took everything, all your thoughts away. Gone. Um, all right.
Shut him down.
Whatever. Thanks again for tuning in. We love you guys and most importantly, have a great fucking day.
Everything that we're sitting here talking about, we're all.
I don't know how it, my screen froze for like two.